...to be here. If you have not done so already, please do that now. All right, we're going to call this special town meeting to order. Constable, may we have a count of the voters present, please?
One hundred and sixty.
One hundred and sixty, we have a quorum. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We're all ready for Christmas, anyway. He's an Eagle Scout, he's qualified. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight, we're moving into the 21st century. We're doing our voting tonight by electronic voting for the first time. You recall back in May at the annual town meeting, we passed an article. We passed an article. We passed an article to fund electronic voting, and Mr. Greg Alexander from Turning Technologies is here this evening. The Turning has been kind enough to allow us to use the system for free tonight in advance of the May Town Meeting.
Still can't hear up there.
Trouble hearing. Can you hear me up there now?
Can anybody hear up there? No, nobody can hear up here.
Okay. Can you hear me now? He said with a cellphone commercial. So tonight, what we're going to do is electronic voting, and when you came in, you registered, you received one of these. So each voter will have one of these. And instead of doing acclamation votes or standing counts, we're going to vote with these. And they're very simple to use. You press number one, or A, to vote yes on an article. Two, B, is to vote no. For each article, we'll leave the voting open for 10 seconds, and we'll see the screen here. You'll see a countdown for how many seconds you have left to vote. You'll vote yes or no. You can change your vote at any point during that 10-second interval. The last number that you press, when the time expires, is the vote that will count. You will see there's a little screen on it. It will show you what your vote is currently. You'll see a little green light that will indicate that your vote was registered. So we'll do things that way. When you came in, you were also issued a receipt. If you need to leave the hall for any reason, you need to leave this handheld set in the room in one of the boxes at the back. And when you come back in, you show the receipt, you'll be issued a new one. Okay, do we understand that? Also, you can only vote your vote with your device. You cannot use anyone else's device. You cannot cast a vote for anybody else, even if they ask you to do so. All right, is that clear? Okay. Any questions on any of this, how we're going to proceed with electronic voting this evening? Okay. And just, if you will, at the end of the meeting, just please do remember to return them to the boxes at the back. We have a test question here tonight, just so you get a little bit familiar with how this works. And we can treat this as though it were an article. So is the town of Whitman the home of the Toll House Cookie? And you can vote one for yes, two for no, as soon as we open the voting, which is now open. So you have 10 seconds. Okay, the voting has closed, and we can see that 95% of the people know that Whitman is the home of the Toll House Cookie, and we have 5% who are in need of some remedial education on this subject. There is a book on the Toll House Cookie that's available, written by Kathleen Tean, who used to be our state rep here a few years back. And I think they're still available at Duval's here, if you want to pick up a copy for the 5%, it might be time to do that. If the tellers would please come forward to be sworn. Yes, three. If you'd just come forward or come to the microphone there.
I know you probably can't hear me, but I'm going to try to speak as loud as I can. Can you hear me? Need to raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to perform your duties as town meeting tellers, lawfully and diligently, to the best of your abilities, to help you guide?
I do. And we are having tellers tonight. Just in case we have an issue with the electronic voting system, we'll revert to our traditional method of standing counts. Will the clerk please read the warrant?
Plymouth SS, to either the Constable of the Town of Whitman. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Whitman, qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet in the Town Hall on said Whitman on Monday, the 11th day of December 2017, at 7:30 PM. Then and there, to act upon the following articles, Articles 1 through 22. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof in not less than eight public places in the town, 14 days at least before the day of said meeting. Hear of fail law and make due return of the warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of holding said meeting, given under our hands this 21st day of November 2017. Signed by the Board of Selectmen. Dr. Carl F. Kowalski, Chairman. Daniel L. Salvucci, Vice Chairman. Scott J. Lambesi, Clerk. Brian J. Bezanson, Member. Randy Lamatina, Member. Warrant attestation. I hereby certify that by virtue of written warrant, I have posted eight copies of said warrant in various sections of the town, with two in each precinct, dated November 22, 2017, attested by Christine M. May Stafford, Constable.
Okay, thank you. Just a few guidelines that we're going to observe here. All voters must sit in the designated areas. Visitors sit in the visitor's section, please. People sitting in the visitor's section may not vote and may not speak during the meeting. Tonight, we're going to do the voting by electronic handset, as I mentioned before. We will revert to the traditional method of the standing count in case there's a failure with the system, or if a vote is immediately challenged by five or more voters. All amendments must be submitted in writing and signed for the town clerk. Massachusetts' General Laws, Articles 1, 2, 3 of the Town Bylaws, and Roberts Rule of Order govern the conduct of this special town meeting. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, please stand and go to the nearest microphone. There's one in the center here, one in the center up top, and one over here at this podium. And state your name and address before making your comments. And please do confine your comments to the article that's on the floor. I'd like to recognize the Finance Committee seated down here in front. They do a very important job for this town. They're all volunteers, and they play a very important role in our town. If you're interested in serving on the Finance Committee, you can contact me. Please silence your cellphones. And do we have any questions about how we're going to proceed tonight? All right, then I will entertain a motion for Article 1. Mr. Linehan.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to amend Article 1 to read to see if the town will vote to transfer $6,449 from Budget Line 125 Animal Control to Budget Line 124 Animal Control of the May 1, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Do we have a motion? Second? Discussion?
The purpose of this is the, in the past, we have hired what we call the full and part-time animal control officer. We now hire two ACOs, one for days, one for evenings. There's no reason to maintain two salary lines, so we're simply transferring the money into the ACO line, and there'll be one salary line going forward.
Any further discussion? Okay. Why don't we vote on this one, then? As soon as this pops up on the screen, we will have 10 seconds to vote. As soon as the clock starts running, am I correct there? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Because this article was amended, the Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend the amended article. Thank you.
All right. And when the clock appears here, the handsets are activated, and you may vote now. And the article carries 98% to 2%. So the article is adopted. A motion for Article 2, Mr. Linehan.
Mr. Moderator, Article 2 is in the form of a discussion and motion. I wish to amend the motion to reduce the requested appropriation from $3,200,000 to $3 million. The article is being reduced by $200,000 because the Public Works Department feels there is work that their employees can do without contracting outside. The article will authorize debt to make necessary repairs to the water system and to provide funding to update all of our water meters, to enable the town to more accurately bill, and more importantly, to have immediate access to billing information for calculating water usage and reconciling billings.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. To see if the town will vote to transfer, I'm sorry, Article 2, to see if the town will appropriate a sum of money to pay costs of water system improvements related to the intersection improvements being made at the intersection of Routes 18 and 27, and the intersection of Routes 18 and 14, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And two, replacing water meters throughout the town, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, borrowing or otherwise provided, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion that the town appropriates $3 million to pay costs of water system improvements related to intersection improvements being made at the intersections of Route 18 and 27, and the intersection of Routes 18 and 14, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, in an approximate amount of $1,500,000. And two, the replacement of water meters throughout the town, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, in an approximate amount of $1,500,000. And that, to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Sections 7 and 8, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by the vote, lest any premium apply to the payment of the cost issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Discussion? Mr. Anderson.
The Finance Committee voted to 7-0 to recommend the amended article.
Ma'am.
Tina Moniz, 88 Woodlong Circle. Mr. Moderator, I have my own amendment to Article 2 that I'd like to read.
All amendments need to be submitted in writing?
I have it in writing.
Okay.
Do you need a copy?
Yes, I do.
Point of order, I think we need to vote the first amendment and then consider the second amendment.
Thank you. Oh, ma'am, it needs to be signed, I'm sorry. So we have an amendment to Article 2, to see if the town will appropriate $1,500,000 to pay the costs of water system improvements solely related to the intersection improvements being made at the intersections of Routes 18 and 27, and the intersection of Route 18 and 14, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. Do we have a motion on this? And a second. All right, discussion. Ma'am?
So the reason why I'm looking to just fund the, or to not fund the water meters and to just fund the water pipes, is because in the express this week, they talked about that 20 to 25% of the water that we are purchasing goes unaccounted for. And it's believed that it's inaccurate water meters that is the reason. And in my personal opinion, like, that just seems crazy to me, that a quarter of the water that our town takes in is lost to just meter issues. It really sounds to me like we have leaks, or multiple leaks, somewhere in town that really need to get fixed first before we approve $1.5 million for water meters. Especially, too, in the article, it also mentioned that, like, this may catch the unaccounted-for water. And I really think that we need to fix the water gates, fix the intersection pipes at 1824, 18, excuse me, 1827 and 18 and 14. Let's see if that, if that brings up the unaccounted-for water. And if you want to come back to me in a year and ask me for new meters then, I'd be happy to approve them. But $1.5 million, when we have no clue if it's really the meters or not, just seems like a lot to me.
Further discussion? Mr. Linehan?
The reason this article is before town meeting is because we have been reviewing, discussing, and considering this project for seven years. Every year, when we get our audited financial statements, one of the criticisms we face is our inability to reconcile water purchases to Brockton. And part of the reason for that is the fact that it takes us 30 to 45 days to read meters. The other concern we have is the information from our engineer, who has provided us with industry estimates based on their experience replacing meters, that the potential loss in metered water is up to 20%. This has nothing to do with the water gates being replaced. There are no leaks at those locations. And we do run I&amp;I testing periodically each year to try and locate and repair leaks. This is not a leak issue. This is an issue to properly identify water purchases and properly bill them. The standard for water meters is 10 to 15 years. We have water meters that are 30 years old that are running in our systems, and the majority of them slow down over time. This is not a, hey, let's do this while we're at it idea. This is something we planned for a long time. The funding for this article will be a bond that will, in year one, cost approximately $270,000, and then will amortize down each year because it's fixed principal. The expected recovery from un-metered water is in the neighborhood of $200,000. We would have to bond whether or not we borrow the money for the meters now. And the bonding cost, whether we do $1,500,000 or $3 million, is pretty much the same. This is the time to act on this.
Further discussion. Ma'am?
Hi. Anita Salt, 7 Marvel. I just have to say that I do not agree with this nice young lady's amendment. I, when this came up, I was watching it at the DOS meetings, I immediately called a friend of mine who is a water systems engineer. She lives in California, and I asked her about this. Told her about our pipes, told her about how much money, told her that we were thinking about the meters. Some are standard, some are old, some are, there's possibly computerized ones. First thing she said, the computerized meters are so accurate, they can detect a leak very, very rapidly. So there won't be an experience where you get, suddenly get a giant bill, and you find out you have a leaky pipe, or a business has a leaky toilet running or something. It's much faster, much quicker. And she did also recommend, you said, that you must replace the pipes and the gates, because we have very, very old lives in Whitman. I think that it's imperative, though, with the modernized, as my friend, who's an engineer, suggested, the modernized meters. They must come in and be done now, the same thing with the pipes replaced, so that when we do work on our roads and streets and all the different intersections, there's nothing, there're not going to be surprises, any breaks. In the main schools, there'll be random pipes and random meters. No nonsense. We owe this to the children of the town to be modernized and have our infrastructure in exceptionally good condition for the next 10, 20, 30 years as they're growing up in our town. And I'd like to say that I'm in favor of doing it now and doing it right. And modernize. Thank you.
Further discussion. Sir?
Rob Baker, 357 Auburn Street. My neighbor called me about a year ago and said, the town water department just called me, said, I've got a leak, I'm using a lot of water. They know. You can, you can read them right away. And we fixed, I fixed his leak. He didn't have a leak, he had a little bit of running toilet. They came in and they changed his meter for him. They told him, oh, your meter's not working right. Okay. His next water bill was $7,000. The people coming in and changing your meter may know how to plug in a meter, they don't know how to read it right. They never read it right. He tried to fight it for months. Finally, they sent the bill to his mortgage company, paid it out of his escrow. He's got nowhere to go. I think if we change all the meters in town, we're going to run into nothing but problems. His meters, half these meters don't need to be changed. And if you do it by, if people are doing it, just a company that goes and plug and play, you're going to have nothing but problems. I don't think we need to change the meters. I like, I like what the lady said, as far as just the million and a half to fix the problems, but I don't think we need to change the meters.
Further discussion. Sir?
John Burnett, 18 Burton Ave. I guess my question's more on financial. I know we have a water and sewer enterprise. I know there's some articles regarding the water and sewer enterprise coming out. But I know we pay and we have a lot of money in reserves in that water sewer enterprises, and I don't see why this can't come out of that. Because at one time, there was four and five million dollars in that enterprise. And I know that's for emergencies and stuff, just like the sewer emergency we just had that cost us about $800,000. And I know that's another article that we have to address with our sewerage problem, which has probably cost us about $1.5 million in the last two years in repairs. So I just question, this is something that probably should come out of that enterprise, I think, before we go to borrow the money. If there's that kind of money sitting in the water and sewer enterprise, let's use that first and not tax us taxpayers. That's my only thing. The other thing is that financially, I think sometimes we can take an article like this and put it on tax floor and pay it in one year, which will save us a lot of financials over the period of time. Just by that reasoning, the town of Abington just bought a ladder truck, and I know the Treasurer personally, he took that thing and taxed us, taxed them one year payment, and the taxes done and over with, and the ladder truck was paid in one year. These are just financial questions I ask. I guess I misunderstand how this is saying here. You're saying you want $3 million. Now, is that $3 million for, $3 million for the water, the meters, and repairing those two roads, or is it 4.5 million that you want for both? This is the discrepancy that I get in this article here. I think we're, you know, we're voting on a couple different things here. I wish we'd divided it, but that's, that's my opinion. I just want a clarification, I guess, on financial end of it. And what is sitting in our water and sewer enterprise today?
Mr. Linehan.
The language in the article is what is required by bond counsel. I'd like to sometimes make it a little clearer, but it's very specific in nature. The article addresses both the repair of the water pipes and the replacement of the meters. We have, after we vote, if we vote in the affirmative, two other articles here, we will have just under $5 million in the enterprise. We also have a considerable amount of work that needs to be done in the sewer system, and we are counting on the enterprise retained earnings to help support some of that work. The, I appreciate the comment about the one-year capital expenditure. We actually did that two years ago, when we upgraded technology at the region. The town did a one-year capital exclusion for $785,000, and that worked well. In this case, we have an ongoing program that hopefully will generate additional revenues that will service the debt. It is probably going to be, if this article carries the way it was originally presented, the first year's payment will likely come from enterprise funds, so that we can capture the earnings that we expect to get from future billings, and then those would service the debt. The debt is inside the enterprise, and it is supported by the Sewer and Water Department, not by the tax base. And one other point. If this article is amended, if the amendment is approved and the borrowing is reduced, we're going to have to table this to prepare a different article for borrowing purposes. But I would recommend that you go with the original request. It makes sense, it's sound financial business.
Further discussion?
I'm sorry, sir. If you want to speak, you need to be recognized. Michael McKenna, 92 Old Mansion Lane. I heard you say $5 million for the total cost, but I didn't hear you say what was in the reserve.
No, the total cost isn't $5 million, it's three-
I thought you said accumulated through the sewer and everything would be $5 million. Is that-
The earnings, the retained earnings will be just under $5 million after our business is concluded today, assuming the two other articles-
But the gentleman before me asked what was in the reserves, and you didn't answer that.
It's 5.9, but we're proposing spending $900,000, so there's really no point to saying it's 5.9.
Okay, I just didn't hear that part, so.
Okay.
Any further discussion on amending this article? Sir?
Bruce Martin, 54 Park Ave. I'm also the Superintendent of Highway Division, DPW. The water superintendent couldn't be here tonight, so I just wanted to speak to a couple of things that the gentleman spoke of on the operational side of the new meters. He had mentioned reading the meters. We send out a crew, it takes approximately six weeks for the crew to go out and read all the meters. Some of the meters we can't get to because we can't get into the house, so there's many that are estimated, and the estimate's always low. So that could be a loss of water there. We're not getting the correct estimates every year. And then that's how some residents can get a surprise, they get estimated for so many years because we can't get in their basement. And then when we do finally get a real reading, it's way higher than they expected, or we expected, and they get those- it's way higher than they expected, or we expected, and they get those outrageous bills. The other thing is, one of the parts of the operation is our secretary will literally read 4,500 or so index cards with the digits on them. Now, our crews are going out on these older meters and writing down the digits on an index card, bringing them back to the office. That secretary there then sits at her desk with stacked cards and punches in the digits for each address. And that's how we get the numbers for each reading. This system will allow us to drive down a street and read their meter as the vehicle's driving down. We can read the town in a day. If you have a water question, you could call the office and we could tell you what you used for water the day before. It's, so it's a little more, even that gentleman had a higher bill, you know, that could be the guys going down to dock basements, they're writing these digits down on cards, accidents happen. You know, it's, it's not an easy thing to do to, you know, try to read those things in these dock cramped spaces all the time. So that's just an operational issue of it. I don't know if anybody has any questions as far as operations. Oh, the gentleman mentioned a crew coming in to install these new meters. Well, that crew would be the top, D P W workers who've been doing it all along. The idea of money savings here is rather than contracting the installation out, we would have our crews do the installs over a period of time. They're here during the day anyway, they can go out, we can put a crew out, depending on what projects we're working on, we can do a crew of six, or do a crew of four, or eight, whatever we can spare on that day, and we can install the meters as we go and save the town a ton of money on the install alone. So, you know, I'd like to see the town vote in favor of the article if we could.
Any other discussion? Well, you address your question to the chair, please. I'm sorry to, sorry to make it stand up and... Sir.
The answer is yes, we would be able, if you called and you had a water usage concern, we could bring up your account right then and there and give you the reading from the last time you were there, or we could send a vehicle out just to drive by your house, get the reading right then and there, come back, download it, and actually have printed out graphs to show you your usage. There's also on these meters, lights that will show a leak. They actually have like a red light showing on there that it's detecting that you may have some kind of leak in the house, so the homeowner can be active to find out if they have leaks by just going down and looking at the meter inside the house and saying, "Do you see that red light on? They have a leak." They can contact us or contact the plumber to try and find the leak.
Will you also be monitoring, so that if something, some of the house shows $7,000 down, you can call them and say, "Hey, is the leak full, or is that a problem?"
We could, we could do that. I know we won't, right now, we read the meters twice a year. We can certainly read the meters once a month, even though the billing wouldn't go off for once a month, we could read them once a month, and that way there we would have an updated catch. So if somebody has a high spike, they wouldn't know, we could, we could say, "Oh, Jesus, he's way up, he might have some kind of issue."
Further discussion, sir.
One other question, too. Are these all going to be inspected by the plumbing inspector? When I touch a meter, I have to take out a permit from the plumbing inspector to go into someone's house and work on their meters. When you shut your meter off, I go through the whole house, but before I turn it on, I take all the air raiders off because the sediment goes right to your faucet. Done, faucet's done. Are they going to do that to everybody's house when they're changing these meters?
Sir.
I don't think, I don't think in this case we would have a plumbing inspector in each house. The D P W works on meters daily. We don't have the plumbing inspector come to your house. It's a simple operation. We expect that we could change approximately, you know, 2 meters per hour. You know, you go in a house, it's unbolt, bolt-in operation. The sending unit is on the meter itself, there's no other work involved except for unbolt the old meter, bolt in the new meter, and move on. So there'll be no, as long as there's a working shut-off valve in front of the meter in the basement, because we wouldn't have to shut off the water at the curb. We know that there's going to be some houses that have bad valves in the basement, we'll have to do that, we'll have to shut the meter off, shut the water off at the curb, change the meter out, turn the water back on at the curb. And then it would be on the homeowner to replace that valve.
Any further discussion? Sir.
The meter would be inside, so...
I'm sorry, only, only people who recognize may speak. Sir, you're, you're next.
Patrick Ricardo, 1 Candlewick Lane. If you would please, I know people are trying to talk to the voters back here, but it's very hard to understand, so when you are getting up here, if you could please speak into the microphone, and if you cannot stand to get up to the microphone, if someone could bring a microphone to that person, because it's very difficult to understand the discussion.
Any further discussion? Ma'am.
Dawn Ballers, 20 Russell Road. So if I understand correctly, 25% of our water usage as a town is unaccounted for? So am I to assume that 25% of my personal residence, the water usage is unaccounted for? So my question is, with a new water meter, can I anticipate that my water bill will now be 25% higher by accounting for my water usage more accurately? That would be my question.
Mr. Lyman.
Typically, a small percentage of all of the meters perform poorly. And if you're one of those meters that's running slowly, then the answer's yes. But that means you're not paying for the water you're getting now. If your meter is running close to accurate, you're not going to see a problem. There's also water that is lost through other programs such as hydrant flushing and occasionally water breaks. So 25% is a high number. I don't think I ever said 25 up here. The estimates are around 20 to 25%, depending on how bad your system is. So if, if, if we have a lot of old meters that aren't running properly, then yeah, some people are going to see an increase. But that's a consequence of proper functioning. The, the issue here is to make sure that we are properly billing all of the users, not just those who've bought meters in the last five years. And the other issue is to improve how we deliver those services, because right now, you could have a leak in your house, and if you had your meter read in October, you're not going to know until April when you get your bill.
Further discussion? Yes, sir, in the back.
Marshall Latina, 100 Lazell Street. Just wanted to question on the financial side. If we do have, after the other amendments are approved, if we have 5 million in reserve, why we're not taking the 3 million out of that instead of sending it out to bond when the operational budget for water sewer is about 4 million, correct? So having 2 million reserve, that's 50% of the operational budget as an emergency fund. I just question why we're going to spend the extra cost of bonding it out when we have cash available?
Mr. Lyman.
One of the other articles tonight is to provide funds to do a right-of-way clearance and do some assessments to a pipe that we know has had some problems. The pipe has ruptured twice in a year, and the cumulative cost of fixing that one pipe is over $900,000. We are going to see some costs as a result of assessing and making repairs to this system. And it's really important we have that money available to do that, because it would be very difficult to start a series of projects and each time, stop, come to town meeting, hold a meeting to either raise the rates or authorize borrowing. Well, actually, it would have to be borrowing because there's no other way to get the money. So while $4 million sounds like a lot of money, in the scope of the system, it's really not. Our system in some areas is over 30 years old, and we are expecting some expenditures, and the money has been built up for that purpose. The bonding is a way to update what we have and move forward, and I really would urge that we defeat this motion and vote the article as presented.
Any further discussion? Sir.
Just one other thing, I started to tick up all the time. I hope we don't go this way, but if we do, and we're going to go high-tech, why don't we go 2 meters so I don't have to pay for sewer or watering my grass?
Mr. Lyman.
At this point in time, we have not, as a group, or at least as a public works department, considered adding secondary meters for water service for, what's the word I'm looking for? Watering outside. However, it is certainly within the ability of the commissioners of public works to determine whether they wish to make a second meter available. It would be available at your cost, you would actually have to pay for that meter, and you would have to pay for the installation, but that is a service that the D P W could consider if they get requests for it.
Further discussion? All right, then we're going to, we're going to vote on the Article II amendment. This is to amend the Article II that's, that's in your, in your program here and replace it with this language, to see if the town will appropriate $1.5 million to pay the costs of water system improvements solely related to the intersection improvements being made at the intersections of Routes 18 and 27, and the intersection of Route 18 and 14, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. So we're voting on this amended article. Yes would replace the language that's in, that's in the warrant, and no would, would defeat the amendment. So we'll open the voting. And we'll close the voting. I'm sorry. No clock, there's no clock on this one, apparently. We have 150 votes, though. Everyone voted? The polling's still open, polling's still open. Anyone need more time? And we'll close the polling. So the, the count is 48% in favor of this amendment, 52% opposed. The amendment fails. So we will proceed to a vote on Article II as presented, as modified, and, and this requires a two-thirds vote to pass. So if we're ready to start voting, we can do that now. This is the Article II that's, that's modified in your program. And the vote is 77% in favor, 23% opposed, so the article does carry by the two-thirds majority and is adopted. A motion for Article III. Mr. Lyman? I'm sorry. Yes, we did have a number. How many people voted? What was the number? 146 people voted. Can you hear me back there? Is it possible to hear back there? We having trouble with the... Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll slow this down then. We'll, we'll slow it down going forward. I'm sorry? Ms. Salt. No, ma'am, 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 you need to address your comments to me, please.
I just wanted everyone to know that when you press your vote, this will light up.
Right, we, we went over that earlier.
You don't even need to look at the timer. When it opens it up, which you can hear him because he's a good speaker, just check here, watch the little...
Do we have a motion for Article III? Mr. Lyman.
As presented to everyone when they checked into the meeting, the single sheet with attachments indicates our request for Article III to read to see if the town will vote to appropriate $20,000 from sewer water free cash to purchase water meters or take any other action relative thereto.
We have a motion? We have a second? Discussion?
The reason this number has been reduced is because the vote we just took in the previous article will include the purchase of meters. It will take several months to make that happen. So the intent of Article III is simply to provide funding for the D P W to purchase meters until such time as we begin the wholesale purchase.
Discussion. Mr. Anderson.
The Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend this article as amended.
Further discussion? All right, then, to, to vote on the modified Article III, to see if the town will vote to appro, to appropriate $20,000 from sewer water free cash to purchase water meters or take any other action relative thereto. So we will start the 10-second countdown in just a moment, and as soon as that, as soon as that appears up here, press 1 to vote yes, press 2 to vote no. You can change your vote during that 10-second window. The last button that you will press when that time expires is the vote that will count. You ready to go? All right, again. Polling is open. And the polling is closed. 88% in favor, 12% opposed. The article carries. Was that better? Could everybody, everybody more comfortable with it now? Okay. Article IV, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $485,000 from sewer water free cash for sewer easement surveying and clearing and test boring or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a motion? Second? Discussion? Mr. Lyman.
As I mentioned a few minutes ago, this is the article that will provide funding to allow the Public Works Department to begin clearing the easement for that six or seven-mile sewer pipe and to begin to assess the conditions.
Discussion. All right, we'll, we'll proceed to a vote then on Article IV. One is yes, two is no. The 10-second clock will start now. And the polling is closed. Article IV, 88% in favor, 12% opposed. The article carries. Article V, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $445,966.71 from Sewer Water Enterprise free cash to pay costs associated with the repair of a sewer forced main pipe or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Lyman.
And this is the cost of repairing that pipe that broke in October.
Discussion. All right, we will proceed to a vote on Article V. Vote 1 for yes, 2 for no. Vote 1 for yes, 2 for no, and we'll start the clock now. And the polling is closed. We have 94% in favor, 6% opposed. The article carries. Article VI, to see if the town will vote to transfer $7,000 from free cash to pay costs associated with installing a generator at the Department of Public Works facility or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion.
Motion. We have a second. Discussion. Sir?
Bruce Martin, 54, Park Ave., DPW superintendent. This is a generator...
Sir, could you speak into the microphone, please? You can address your comments to me.
This is a generator that we got from the Town Hall when they got a newer, larger generator. It's been downed, DPWI, not in service, and this is the cost of having it rewired and plumbed in with gas so we can have a generator down there, which we do not have right now.
Further discussion? All right, we'll proceed to a vote then on Article VI, and we will begin the 10-second And the polling is now closed. 91% in favor, 9% opposed, so the article carries. Article VII, to see if the town will vote to transfer $96,500 from free cash to Budget Line 133, all other services of the May 1, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, to fund the cost of items for the first year of a three-year collective bargaining agreement for the period July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020, between the town and local 1769 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second? Discussion. Mr. Lyman?
The vote we are asking you for tonight will approve the collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated for the period beginning July 1, 2017. Most of our contracts run over three-year cycles, and where we had four contracts, which you're being asked to vote on tonight, it took a bit of time to reach agreement with the various parties. Your vote here will approve the contract that was negotiated between the town through its Board of Selectmen and the union, the IAFF, and we urge you to support this article.
Further discussion? All right, we'll open the voting then on Article VII. One is yes, two is no. We'll begin the 10-second clock now. And the polling is closed. We have 89% in favor, 11% opposed. The article carries. Article VIII, to see if the town will vote to transfer $7,921 from free cash to the following budget lines of the May 1, 2017 Annual Town Meeting. Line 227, Youth Services Librarian, $1,022. Line 228, Circulation Supervisor, $2,825. Line 229, Library Technicians, $2,829. Line 231, Senior Library Technician, $1,245, to fund the cost of items for the first year of a three-year collective bargaining agreement for the period July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020, between the town and the Whitman Public Library employees, SEIU Local 888, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Yeah. The clerk.
Don Varley, 135 Washington Street. What percentage of an increase does this reflect in their contract?
Mr. Lyman?
The increase is 2.5% for the year July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018, and then 2% for 18, 19, and 19, 20.
Further discussion? All right, then, we will move to a vote on Article VIII. One is yes, two is no, and we'll begin the clock now. And the polling is closed. We have 93% in favor, 7% opposed. The article carries. Article IX, to see if the town will vote to transfer $2,183 from free cash to Budget Line 226, Assistant Library Director of the May 1, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, to fund a 4.5% salary increase for fiscal year 2018 or to take any other action relative thereto.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Ms. Varley.
Don Varley, 135 Washington Street. I just have a real quick question that pretty much everybody in Town Hall got 2.5% department heads and everything. I don't see why, even the library director herself got 4%, why one individual would get a 4.5% over everybody else?
Ma'am.
Hi, everyone. My name is Andrea Rounds. I'm the library director. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. This position, the assistant director position, was a relatively new position at the library. In the past, it was a reference librarian, and as of this contract, the assistant director position is now coming out of the union and is now becoming a management position. So this 4.5% increase does two things. It reflects the fact that she is not going to have the 2.5% increase that the rest of the union members just received, and then an additional 2% increase to her salary brings her position more in line with our neighboring communities. So there was a salary survey that was done. The Board of Library Trustees negotiated with the assistant library director, and they came up with this figure that they thought was fair. The Finance Committee voted to recommend this figure, and we hope that you will support this very necessary adjustment to make this position a marketable and more fairly compensated position, just to reflect that this year she is being pulled out of the union and becoming a member of the management team.
Further discussion? All right, we will move to a vote then on Article IX. One is yes, two is no. We'll begin the countdown now. And the polling is closed with 77% in favor and 23% opposed. Article IX is adopted. Article X, to see if the town will vote to transfer $66,000 from free cash to Budget Line 123, all other services of the May 1, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, to fund the cost items for the fiscal, for the first of three-year collective bargaining agreement for the period July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020, between the town and local 509, IBPO, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. No discussion, then we will proceed to a vote on Article X. One is yes, two is no, and you begin voting now. And the polling is closed with 77% in favor and 22% opposed. The article is adopted. Article XI, to see if the town will vote to transfer $3,804.71 from free cash to Line 197, Health Inspector of the May 1, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, to fund the cost of additional hours for the health inspector position or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Then no discussion. We will move then to a vote on Article XI. One is yes, two is no, and we will begin the polling now. And that's 85% in favor and 15% opposed. The article is adopted. Article XII, to see if the town will vote to transfer $5,000 from free cash to fund a Phase 1 assessment of Hobart's Pond as required by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, Office of Dam Safety, or take any other action relative thereto.
No vote?
We have a motion and a second. We have discussion. No discussion, then we'll move to a vote on Article XII. One is yes, two is no. We'll start the voting now. And 87% in favor, 13% opposed. Article XII is adopted. Article XIII, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $15,000 from free cash to reimburse the Whitman Hansen Regional School District for the capital cost to replace two rooftop units of Whitman Middle School, which is no longer working and needs replacement, or take any other action relative thereto.
No vote?
We have a motion and a second. No discussion, then we will move to a vote on Article XIII. One is yes, two is no. Begin voting now. The article is adopted. Article XIV, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $26,536, that's cost equals $44,360 times 59.82% from free cash to reimburse the Whitman Hansen Regional School District for preliminary costs associated with moving the pre-kindergarten program from the McQuan School to the Whitman Hansen Regional High School, or take any other action relative thereto.
No vote?
Moved and seconded. No discussion, then we will move to vote on Article XIV. One is yes, two is no. We'll begin the clock now. Polling is closed. 84% in favor, 16% opposed. The article is adopted. Article XV, to see if the town will vote to transfer $300,000 from the Town Capital Stabilization Account to pay for costs associated with the repair of the Duval School roof or take any other action relative thereto.
No vote?
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Lyman?
While most of these are self-explanatory, I think this one needs a little explaining. The Duval School was one of several that were renovated in 2001. A new section was added, and we have experienced nothing but problems with that part of the building. A few years ago, when we had the heavy snowfall, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, 59 leaks in the building? We have made some repairs, fortunately, with the help of insurance, but we still have some major repairs to make. The Building Commissioner, Bob Kern, and I have met with the consultant, the designer, and have also met with the school representatives several times over this. The projected cost for the repair is $1,035,000 or thereabouts. We're not confident that... Maybe there's a better way to say this. We would like to be sure that the repairs that are proposed will be a permanent solution for that building. So we're asking for the additional $300,000 in order to have sufficient funds to make the repairs to the major side of the building, which is the southeast-facing area. We have $300,000, which was appropriated previously. This would be added to that appropriation. We would then seek bids and make repairs, evaluate that process before we go further. So we're asking for a vote to have sufficient funds to bid and contract this work.
Further discussion? All right, this vote also requires a two-thirds majority to pass, so we'll open the voting And it's 89% in favor, 11% opposed. That clears the two-thirds barrier. The article is adopted. Article XVI, to see if the town will vote to transfer $26,744 from the Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Fund to pay for costs associated with replacing rooftop air units at the fire station or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. With no discussion, we'll move to a vote then on Article XVI. One is yes, two is no. You may begin voting now. And the polling is closed. 92% in favor, 8% opposed. The article is adopted. Article XV. Mr. Lyman?
Again, in the handouts that were received earlier, I would like to propose Article III to see if the town will vote to appropriate $20,000...
Article XV.
To see if the town will transfer $25,000 from the Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Fund to be added to Budget Line 135, Fire Department expense of the May 1, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
We have a motion?
Motion.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Anderson?
Finance Committee voted tonight 7-0 to recommend.
Mr. Lyman?
The reason we're asking for this money is we have already incurred much of the expense that we're seeking to transfer. We have had extraordinary repairs to the ladder unit. We also were the recipient of a grant for a new furnace system for the Fire Department. Unfortunately, because the energy payback isn't as good as we'd hoped, we had to contribute half of the money, and we took that out of expense because there was no other money available. Voting on this article will reimburse the expense line for normal, regular expenses we would incur during the course of the year.
Further discussion? All right, then, we'll move to a vote on Article XV. One is yes, two is no. You may begin voting now. 92% in favor, 8% opposed. The article is adopted. Article XVIII, to see if the town will vote to transfer $50,000 from the Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Account to repair, upgrade, or replace the Fire Department radio system or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Lyman?
Seems like these things always come at the same time. We had a failure in the microwave system that feeds the radio communications for the Fire Department on the east side or west side of town? West side. We need to replace that component. We also need to replace some additional segments of this system. The Fire Department has a, really, a very current radio technology, and by making these replacements, we will also be able to do some improvements to the radio system in the Police Department and start to tie those things together. There will be more money requested for this project in May, but this is what we need now to get the immediate work done.
Further discussion? All right, then, we will move to a vote on Article XV. One is yes, two is no, and you may begin voting now. And the polling is closed. 90% in favor, 10% opposed. The article carries. Article XIX, to see if the town will vote to transfer $15,000 from the Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Account to supplement a $60,000 appropriation voted in Article 25 of the May 1, 2017 Annual Town Meeting for the refurbishing of a 1990 pumping engine or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Lyman?
I think we all remember Yogi Berra and his déjà vu all over again. This, again, is a repair that is really necessary for us to maintain a vehicle that will serve us again probably for another 20 years. The alternative is we buy a new one, which is around $800,000. The Fire Department has done a good... The Fire Department has done a good job in taking equipment that although aged, is still serviceable and reliable in making it last. These improvements, as I said, certainly will give us another 10 years, perhaps more.
Further discussion. All right, then we will move to a vote on Article 19. One is yes, two is no, and you may begin voting now. And the polling is closed, ninety-three percent in favor, seven percent opposed. The article is adopted. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to approve the amendment to the South Shore Regional Vocational School District Agreement, a copy of which is available in the Town Clerk's Office and at the Town Meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Lyman.
The agreement that South Shore has presented to the nine-member towns has been in effect since several years before Whitman joined the South Shore region. A number of things have changed in the statutes that govern educational funding, and particularly regional educational funding. The agreement has been available in the Clerk's Office for review. The changes are more housekeeping than anything else. The exception is perhaps that it better defines how capital funding will occur and what the quantum for voting is on a capital project, which changes from all towns to two-thirds vote. It is a reasonable agreement.
Further discussion. All right, then we'll move to a vote on Article 20. One is yes, two is no. You may begin, begin voting now. And the polling is closed with ninety-three percent in favor and seven percent opposed. The article is adopted. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town's General Bylaw by adding a new Article 37 that would provide as follows. Article 37, Marijuana Establishments. Consistent with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 3A2, all types of non-medical marijuana establishments as defined in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 1, including marijuana cultivators, independent testing laboratories, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, or any other types, types of licensed marijuana-related businesses, shall be prohibited within the town of Whitman. This prohibition shall not apply to the sale, distribution, or cultivation of marijuana for medical purposes licensed under Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012. The section shall be effective upon passage by the voters at a town election, or take any action relative thereto.
Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
As you all know, in 2016, the Commonwealth voted in the majority to allow recreational marijuana. The town of Whitman, in the town of Whitman, fifty-four percent of the residents voted to approve recreational marijuana. There have been a host of questions as a result of that vote, and legislation was passed to better regulate the sale of recreational marijuana. At the same time, because there was so much question within the state about who will and who won't and who will allow, a process was developed whereby towns that voted to bar, to not approve recreational marijuana are off the hook this year. But they're going to be on the hook to take action next year. Because we voted in the affirmative, because we voted in the affirmative this year, unless we vote to determine that we don't wish to have recreational marijuana stores in Whitman, it will happen come April 1st, when they begin accepting applications. So as I understand it, and we do have counsel here if there's any legal questions, but I believe we've exhausted it, if you vote tonight to approve, we are going to fix that. If you vote tonight to approve a prohibition on the sale of recreational marijuana, this is the first of several steps that need to be taken. This is a general bylaw. Because protective zoning bylaws also come into play, we will be revisiting this if the town votes not to accept recreational marijuana a second time through zoning. And then we are also required to present this question to the general populace through an election ballot. So there's a three-step process here. If the majority of people here are in favor of recreational marijuana, then we're done. If the majority of people here are opposed to recreational marijuana, this will be the first of three steps. So as best I can explain it, if you vote yes on this article, you are voting to establish a prohibition against recreational marijuana sales in the town of Whitman. I hope I've made myself clear on that, and certainly will open it to questions.
Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am. It's ma'am, you need to, ma'am, could you come to the microphone, please? Could you come to the microphone, please?
If you could give a short yes, what a yes means, and a short no, what a no means, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, a short yes.
The verbiage is tricky on this.
And it always is. If you vote yes, you are voting to restrict the sale of recreational marijuana in Whitman. Has nothing to do with people growing their own plants and using it and buying it somewhere else. However, if you vote yes tonight, you are saying, we don't want recreational marijuana shops selling marijuana in Whitman. If you vote no, then what you're saying is, you do want them. And the test for this is a town meeting and an election. We're having the town meeting tonight, and if the majority of residents here say, we want to see recreational marijuana stores in Whitman, then you would vote no. No means yes, yes means no. So if I haven't further confused it, a yes vote says, no, I don't want recreational marijuana. And no vote says, yes, I do.
Donald Visser, 929 Washington Street. I believe I understand things, Frank, the way you explain them. Myself and a number of other people about a year ago came in front of the Board of Selectmen when the factory warehouse was proposed to bring in marijuana growing in Whitman. And that was for that purpose, and a lot of us strongly opposed it. And Mr. Lyman heard that loud and clear, I think, at that point in time. Now, we're going a step further here and considering whether we would allow marijuana recreational to come into our town, as the article says, in various ways, whether it's labs, whether it's stores, whatever. And I am strongly opposed to having marijuana come into this town in any form, and for several reasons. It's a fact that marijuana is a starting point for, or a gateway to stronger drugs. It's proven over and over again. And if we've been listening to reports, read the news, read articles, you would know that. I'm a former vocational high school teacher at South Shore Vo-Tech. I taught machine shop for a long time there, and I've since retired. I have seen kids come into that school occasionally that are using marijuana, and they're not working too well. Their brain is not working too well in the morning when this has happened. I've seen it happen. I've heard it from other instructors. Think about that. That's a scary thing, to have kids that might be influenced by marijuana coming into a vocational high school, especially where machinery is running on a regular basis. I taught machine shop. I can't imagine what could happen with a dysfunctional kid that might be high on drugs. So I guess a yes vote would be a smart thing to do as far as I'm concerned, in prohibiting this from coming into the town. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hi. Lynn Walton, 271 Sportsman's Trail. Okay, I could do it again. Lynn Walton, 271 Sportsman's Trail. I, I have, I feel like there's a little bit of a vague, vagueness to this, when it says things like, "all other types of licensed marijuana-related businesses." That's very broad. I'm wondering if somebody could explain to me, and to the group, if we say, sure, go ahead, let's sell marijuana here, what else are we getting ourselves into? This seems to be a blanket across. That concerns me. That's my first question, if you want to go ahead and start with that.
We have a representative from Town Council here who can address your question, ma'am.
Thank you.
Peter Sumners of Murphy Lammery &amp; Murphy, we're Town Council for the town of Whitman. Licensed marijuana-related businesses would include the sale, distribution, or cultivation of marijuana. So it would, it would encompass all types of the recreational marijuana establishments that the Cannabis Control Commission will be licensing come April 1st.
So would that be, for example, we were talking back in the spring about having a growing facility here, which was going to be quite large. Is that included in this? I'm not talking about medicinal, I'm asking a question related to this. Could a facility like that come into our town and grow recreational marijuana on a large scale, considering it would be a business? And if we say, sure, let's go ahead and sell marijuana in our town, that also would be a part of it? Is that correct? Would they be able to have a recreational marijuana-growing facility here in the town of Whitman if we tonight said, sure, let's go ahead and continue with marijuana sales?
If you, yes, I believe if the, if the warrant, if the warrant article is defeated, you could have a, a grow facility in Whitman. But this doesn't, as you mentioned, this does not apply to medical.
Right. I just want to make sure everybody understands that we're not just talking about a smoke shop that can, you know, open up and sell marijuana. I want everybody to make sure they're reading this entire article. It's marijuana cultivators, it's independent testing labs, it's marijuana product manufacturers, it's marijuana retailers, and it's any other type of licensed marijuana businesses. We're not just talking about a small shop selling some marijuana. Please make sure you read this entire article. This is long-term, this affects us now, this affects our future, this affects our children. I am not talking about just selling marijuana in a small shop. Please read this carefully.
Further discussion. Ma'am.
Need a salt, is that in Marvel?
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
The better? I, I have Bell's policy. Half my face is paralyzed, so that's why it sounds funny, too. I'm curious about a few financial things I haven't heard addressed. Some of those concerns also, can someone who is growing the maximum amount of marijuana in their backyard, can they sell that to any establishment? Where will these establishments get their marijuana? Because I'll, I'll grow it, man, I mean, no, I'm kidding. But I mean, can somebody grow it and make extra retirement income by selling it to the shop out on 18? The other thing is, it's been in the news quite a lot, the abuse of medical marijuana cards. That's in the news a lot. The cops will pull them over, and they'll say, hey, I have medical marijuana card, that's why you have two joints in there, and then the cop finds $20 a pot in their truck. Additionally, there's been a lot of accidental ingestion by children of marijuana edibles. So how will we focus on that? How we handle that? Also, do our law enforcement officers, our first responders, do they have any clue or idea, or any kind of idea of what financially might conquer them? Do we need more officers? Will we need our own K-9 unit one day? How are those expenses going to be handled? And is there, do they know if there's a state source who could help us get a K-9 unit if we need it? Or help, help us with any financial burdens? Or will all of these be on the town?
Sir?
So, Peter Sumners, Town Council. I can respond to the question about whether a person growing marijuana for private use can then sell marijuana? The answer is no. It's the same as, as now, because there are no licensed marijuana establishments that can grow, cultivate, distribute, or sell marijuana. Nobody in Massachusetts can legally sell marijuana right now. Once marijuana establishments are licensed, then there will be licensed stores at which you can sell marijuana. But private growers who do not have a license to sell marijuana cannot sell recreational marijuana.
Okay. So is our town going to establish by bylaws? Which businesses can sell it? Where in town? Can it only be settled out on 18? Or are those things to come? Additionally, what recourse does the granny who's in the park with her kids have if somebody's smoking pot and their pot smokes go into them? What's the procedure? Will they get, if we call the town and say, look, my kids are getting high from someone else's smoke, can someone come over? Do they get written a ticket?
Unfortunately.
How's that going to be? What's that?
Unfortunately, this is way beyond the scope of the authority of town meeting. Let me finish. Town meeting has the opportunity now to vote either in favor of allowing marijuana, recreational marijuana facilities, to come into town, and that would be by voting no on this article. Or town meeting can vote yes to support this article to prohibit those operations. All we can do is what is within the scope of the authority of the town and its zoning rules. As I said before, if the majority of this meeting votes no, we have taken, we have taken the first step to prohibiting recreational marijuana development. No, no. If, though I'm not, if the town votes yes, we have taken the first step to prohibiting the sale of recreational marijuana or the development of it. Then we would have to go into another meeting to establish a bylaw prohibiting that sale. And thirdly, we would have to go to a town election so that a majority of the people who turn out in that election can make the decision. And if we vote yes here to prohibit, and if we create a bylaw to prohibit it at town meeting, but then the election says, we want it, it's all over. You have to have both.
Okay, so if it's defeated here today, and we just go forward, what's the next step? Does zoning board?
Yes. The, if, if, if this article is defeated, this town meeting has said, we're okay with recreational marijuana. We would then send instruction to the planning board to begin developing a bylaw to determine where in the town of Whitman marijuana can be sold.
How we determine what the fines are? How will we determine what the fines are if you smoke in front of kids?
We don't, we don't have any authority in that area.
The zoning board?
The cannabis, no. The Cannabis Control Commission will be regulating the sale of marijuana.
That's a state commission?
That's a state commission. You remember, once, once the state took the position that recreational marijuana is okay, our bylaws governing the sale and possession of marijuana became pointless. Not secondary. They're no longer enforceable. So it's, it's, we, we can regulate our small part of the world to some degree, but we're limited by the actions taken by the state. And if recreational marijuana is allowed in Whitman, it'll be the Cannabis Control Commission that determines who gets licensed and what the rules for the sale of marijuana are.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Ma'am, in the back.
Hi. Michelle Winnett from 308 Rayner Ave. I just had a question as to, if this is not prohibited, are there other steps that the town can take to prevent a particular kind of business to come into town? Like if I wanted to open up a liquor store? I'm sure there are regulations and there are zoning and planning requirements. Is this something that is like a stopgap if this is not prohibited?
Well, the, no, not in this case. In the case of liquor, the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission regulates liquor. We, as a town, have the ability to approve or deny a license. We don't have the ability, if the state, if the town allows recreational marijuana, we don't have the ability to further regulate it. It's the state that will make those regulations. The only thing we can do is we can determine by zoning where we would permit those facilities to be.
Further discussion? Ma'am?
Hi, everybody. Jenna Martin, 17 Easy Street. I'm going to play devil's advocate here, guys. Everybody in the room, please, raise your hand if you've had an alcoholic beverage, please. And don't lie. Everybody in this room, who has had an alcoholic drink?
Ma'am, we're not taking votes here.
Okay. So apparently I'm wrong. Everybody in this room has never had a drink. I'm just going to point out, recreational marijuana. I'm sorry, I'm for it. I'm also a medical patient. Cannabis has saved my life. I'm not happy to tell you that in the past, I've been on medication, a lot of medication. I know, I'm sorry, I'll make this quick. We're not here to discuss the medical benefits, but it's saved my life. I used to be in a bottle of pills, bottle of benzos, 100 of them a month. I've had friends that have died from ODing on drugs and on alcohol. Has anybody in here ever walked into a liquor store this week? Yeah, you have. Do you know how many deaths, on average, per year in the United States are alcohol-related? 88,000. Up to date this year, 2017, 92,000-plus alcohol-related deaths. Do you know how many deaths have occurred from cannabis? Zero! None! It is physically impossible. You're shaking your head?
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm going to ask you to confine your comments to the article.
But everybody in this room, I can guarantee you, that's the reason. You're against cannabis because it can kill you. You're against cannabis because it can harm you. You're against cannabis because it's addictive.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you again, please, confine your comments to the article.
Okay. I just want anybody in this room to show me where one person has smoked marijuana and died from smoking it. Cannabis-related.
Mr. Small, you have the floor.
88,000. So you're going to talk, the one...
Ma'am, ma'am.
Fred Small, 87 Hilltop Road.
How many people have died from cannabis-related?
Ma'am, ma'am, I believe I have the floor.
That's all, that's all.
Please be seated.
Thank you, ma'am. Our athletic director, Bob Rogers, has done studies. Marijuana will impede your brain. Children under the age of 25 years old, it affects their brain. My personal belief is we do not need to encourage the sale of marijuana on the street corners. We don't need it in our shops. We don't need it in the liquor stores. We don't need it in our town. I hope you enjoy our way of life here and what we all try and do for our kids. Please, joining me, vote yes to prohibit this from happening.
Further discussion? Sir, in the back.
Marshall Latina, 100 Lazell Street. Just my question is, if this passes, do we have any motions to prohibit the sale of alcohol in town?
Missed the line?
The answer is no. This is something new, and the statutes are providing us with some guidelines on how to address it. I believe in 1929, we attempted to do that, and it was a colossal failure trying to do away with alcohol.
Further discussion? Sir, in the front.
Brian Poplin, I'm at 30 Oakwood Avenue. I put, just some comments for me. I personally believe that the open free market is probably the best thing to determine whether we should have stores and growing facilities and all those things that come along with it. And I know that lots of people have concerns, but I think that the best thing to do is to defer to capitalism and to see what the free market does. It's already legal in the state. It's not going to change that. This is just for our town. Let's let businesses open. I'm not affiliated with any of them or future businesses. But let's see what capitalism can do. And if there's no demand, let it go away. But anything else, I think, is anti-capitalism, and we should trust in the free market. Thank you.
Sir?
Chris George, 4 Shelley Lane. Frank, just to make sure, all we're doing here tonight is voting to potentially give the voters a chance to clarify the decision they made previously, now that the state has given us guidance as to how they're going to allow the sale of recreational marijuana amongst other recreational facilities.
If the answer is yes to this vote, yes to your question.
I'd like to make a motion to move the previous question.
We have a motion to move the question. We'll take a vote on that, a majority vote to move the question. Hang on one second here. A vote to move the question is to cut off debate and to move to a vote on the, on the question itself. This is, this is a vote basically to close debate.
Stop talking.
All right. We ready? Okay. So we have, now a motion to move the question, which is a motion to close debate on this question, and if it passes, then we'll vote on the article next. Is that, is that clear? So one is yes, we want to close debate. Two, no, we want to keep going.
There will be no countdown time.
And there's no countdown timer on this, so...
You tell them when to close it.
You can start now.
Just tell them we're going to close it.
And we will close. Let's close the voting now. And 90% versus 10%, so we will move the question. We proceed to a vote on Article 21. And again, a yes vote is a vote to prohibit recreational marijuana establishments in town. A no vote is to allow them. So we're going to vote on Article 21. One is yes, two is no, beginning now. And the polling is closed. We have a yes vote of 75% versus 25 for no, so Article 21 is adopted.[1467.92][1467.92](Applause). The next article, Mr. Linem.
This last article for the town meeting was incorrectly numbered on page five as 21. I am proposing this article as Article 22.
Article 22, then, to see if the town will vote pursuant to provisions of Massachusetts General Law 32B, Section 7A, to establish the town's contribution toward the health insurance premiums for eligible employees, retirees, and surviving spouses at 65% and eliminate the $9,500 maximum limit imposed by Article 49 of the May 1, 2006 Annual Town Meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I'll try and make this simple. In 2006, the town voted to establish a financial cap on health insurance of $7,500. A year later, we voted to raise that cap to $9,500, at that time never really appreciating how far health insurance could go. For the past several years, every health plan for families has exceeded that cap by a factor of two. So people with individual insurance paid 25% of their premium, and the town paid 75%. But people with family insurance paid 50/50. Translation, the average weekly payment from town employees for a family plan was $300 per week out of pocket. Meanwhile, the individuals and the retirees were still paying 75/25. So we have proposed to change our health insurance payments by eliminating the cap and changing the ratio from 75/25 to 65/35. The net increase to the town is approximately $40,000. It is within the appropriation we currently have, which is why you don't see a question here in terms of how much money to raise. But the issue here is one of basic fairness and equity, and I ask that the town vote to support this article.
Further discussion? Sir? May I come to a microphone, please?
Mr. Linem, your question, your comment was, for a single plan, was 75/25. And then you said a family plan was 50/50/50. Now, are you telling us that they're all going to be 65/35?
Yes.
Okay. And that means that the town is picking up 15% on the 50/50 more, but dropping 10% on the...
Correct.
Okay. I just want a clarification on that. And this is all considered...
And just so you can appreciate the numbers, there are approximately 122 individual plans.
Yep.
And the, Mary Beth, is it 49/50 families? Is it something near that? Those, those plans are subsidizing the 122 people, and we're simply trying to bring it into balance.
By bringing this into balance, there's no increase to us as taxpayers, the same, about the same amount that you predicted on your budget?
It's going to cost us a little more, but it's within the appropriation that we made for health insurance.
Okay. And this includes after the retire and everything?
Includes everybody who gets insurance from the town.
Okay.
Further discussion? All right, then, we will move to a vote on Article 22. One is yes, two is no, and you may begin voting now. And the voting is closed. 90% in favor, 10% opposed. The article carries. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. A second discussion. And you need to vote on this, folks. A motion to adjourn, one yes, two no? And hang on one second now. Hang on one second. Hang on one second. We need to do this. So we're going to open the voting now.
Everybody here wants 100%.
And surprise, 4% want to continue, so the meeting is adjourned. Please return your handset devices to the boxes that are located in the rear of the auditorium. Thank you.